Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I don't have any additions or corrections for you. I make a motion to approve it as presented.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. implication, Reverend Hope Church.
Greetings. Thank you for allowing us to be, allowing me to be here on this evening of the twenty-fourth. I'm sorry, like, I'm not able to stay for the rest of the meeting. I have one right after, but I can thank you for the chance to, for us as pastors to show up. So many different names for God. One of the names from my particular Judeo-Christian perspective that we find in the Gospel of John is Advocate. This idea that God is our advocate. And so it's in that, in that spirit that I read this prayer by Bruce Sanguin. "We gather to renew our confidence in a more illumined future as we enter the kingdom of God, here and now, as a foretaste of what is to come. We give ourselves to this emerging future, knowing that our choices, no matter how small, resonate across every strand of this cosmic web. We are not alone as future forgers. In our fear that keeps us looking back over our shoulder, Spirit or Advocate is with us. In our passion to create a holy future, Spirit is with us. In our resolve to face and overcome all that keeps us from our ideals, Spirit is with us. And so we pray, lift us up, Abiding Spirit, above all obstacles, and grant us a glimpse of what is possible when hearts and minds discover that you are in our fears, in our hopes, and in our commitments." We pray this in your name. Amen. May that Spirit be with you.
Thank you. Next of pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nations of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything? I heard arts in the park was pretty good, huh? Case to Hutchinson.
It's pretty busy down there. The weather was perfect, so.
That's nice. All right, we have a couple resolutions underneath there. We have resolution number one-five-seven-seven-two. Resolution accepting five hundred dollar donation from Walt and Lynn Clay for future equipment purchases at the Hutchinson Police Services. And resolution number one-five-seven-seven-three. Resolution accepting two thousand dollar donation from Tyrek Kalenberg for a sensor panel at the Shady Ridge Park.
Motion to approve resolution one-five-seven-seven-two and one-five-seven-seven-three. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve both those resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Citizens addressing the council, just please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, we have approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of September tenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the budget workshop of September tenth, two thousand twenty-four.
We approve the regular meeting and budget workshop minutes.
I'll second those.
Motion by Tim, second by Chad to approve both those minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda, this will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. We have board reappointments, reappointment of Carl Lentley to the price advisory board to two thousand of, August of two thousand twenty-seven. Appointment of Andrew Hadeen to the airport commissions to September of two thousand twenty-five. And Tara Olberg to the sustainability advisory board to May of two thousand twenty-six. B is approval of service line repair program changes. C is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Upper Midwest Alstomers Club on July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, at McCall County Fairgrounds. D is approval of resolution number one-five-seven-six-nine. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of preliminary plat for Danielson addition with favorable planning commission recommendation. E is approval of resolution number one-five-seven-seven-zero. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit for the tattoo establishment in a C-three zoning district located at two-twenty-five Main Street South with favorable planning commission recommendation. F is approval of resolution number one-five-seven-seven-five. Resolution accepting petition and approving annexation under orderly OA-dash-eleven-ninety-seven between the City of Hutchinson and Township of Lynn with favorable planning commission recommendation. And G is claims appropriation and contract payments, register A. Anything anybody wants pulled off?
I make a motion to accept it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Claims appropriation, contract payments, register B. My son has a check there for his business, so I will be abstaining from the vote.
Motion approved, consent agenda two.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve me abstaining. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. All right, we'll skip down to new business. Resolution number one-five-seven-seven-one. Resolution relating to the issuance of general application street construction and improvement bond series twenty-twenty-four.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So a month ago, we came to you and received your approval to go out and essentially sell bonds to help finance our twenty-twenty-four roadway improvement projects. And before I turn it over to Nick Anhut from Elders, we did have our bond sale this morning, and he'll go through that with you. I just wanted to kind of reiterate how we do, how we finance these roadway projects just quickly. Bonds, bonded debt is the majority of our financing for roadway improvements. And I believe this year was about sixty percent of our costs are being financed by bonds. However, we do finance a good portion through our enterprise funds, our water, sewer, and stormwater funds, and then also through special assessments. So about forty percent of our costs related to the roadway projects were funded by other sources than bonded debt. So just wanted to point that out. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Nick, and he's going to go through the bond sale with you. And then if you have questions, either Nick or I am available.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Nick Anhut with Elders and Associates. We had a strong result this morning on the bond sale. Before I get into that detail, I'll also say that in the interim time, we also had a discussion with Standard Impowers, who rates the credit of the city, and they affirmed the city's existing double-A minus credit rating, which is good news, not a surprise in any regard, but I'd say, you know, a very strong rating. And we had a fairly brief conversation with them. They seemed very steadfast and confident in this city's financial position. So it was apparent that, you know, they saw no pressures whatsoever in the city's financial regard. You know, they still kind of cite some limiting factors from the size of the community and the local economy in terms of holding the city back maybe from an upgrade in the future, but all other signs where we're pointing positively in that regard. So they do hold your financial practices and policies in high regard. So with that said, we did receive four bids on the purchase of the bonds, with the winning bid coming from TD Securities. So that's the same kind of parent company as, you know, TD Ameritrade. But this is their underwriting desk out of New York that bid on these bonds at an interest rate of three-point-three-two percent. That's indicative, I think, of some of the momentum as rates have been coming down and anticipating the Fed cuts that occurred just this last week. The cover or the, the high bid was at a three-point-five-five percent. Both of those are lower than our projections that we put forward about a month and a half ago. So good news on that front means a lower interest cost, lower levy associated to repay this debt. The final sizing of the bond will be just over two million dollars, so two million seventy-five thousand. That'll be an amount sufficient to cover the portion of the project costs that Andy alluded to. And it'll be repaid from both special assessments and a dedicated tax levy that fits within your long-term financial, your debt management plan. The average levy will be a hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred dollars, which is a, is a savings, as I mentioned, compared to the projections and the original plans that we've been talking about throughout the years. So that's good news on that front. Other than that, not really too much to talk about. Their TD Securities did include paying for bond insurance within their bid, which is not something that we've seen quite often. It's at their discretion, it's part of their cost, and we compare that when we compare the other bids that were presented. So you might see B-A-M is what the firm is called, Build America Mutual, as providing insurance on these bonds. That's to protect the bondholders. It's not something that will incur any additional obligations of the city of Hutchinson. It's just something that will protect, again, the, the bondholders if there were an unfavorable result in the future from any non-payment, which we don't expect. But it also led to that lower interest cost ultimately. Why, why these rates are so much lower than our projections is because that insurance is also providing additional security for that. So outside of that, I don't think I have any, anything of note on this issue, but we certainly recommend that the council move ahead and adopt the resolution that was presented to award this sale to TD Securities in their low bid.
Nick, Andy, maybe remember, what was our interest rate last year when we did, you know, it out for?
Three-point-five-eight, I believe.
So we're down about a quarter.
Yeah.
Percent.
And that's pretty much in line with, I think, the general market as a whole.
Any other team of motion?
All through my motion. To accept.
Second.
Motion by David, second by Pat to approve that resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Move on. Resolution number one-five-seven-seven-four. A resolution of providing a allowance to seniors housing facility revenue bonds of two thousand nineteen as the Prince of Peace project and authorizing the execution of documents related there too.
Good evening again. Before I turn it over to representatives from Prince of Peace and Citizens Bank, I just wanted to give a little background. Back in twenty nineteen, Prince of Peace came to us requesting the city-issue conduit bonds, which were allowed to by state statute. It's, it's one avenue for nonprofits to receive essentially cheaper financing than if they went through a private financing arrangement. So we issued tax-exempt bonds, which achieve a lower interest rate for them, three-point-three million. And then we essentially borrowed those funds to Prince of Peace through a loan agreement that was executed. Then that loan agreement was ultimately assigned to Citizens Bank as, as the lender. So just a few quick bullet points on conduit bonds. They, they in no way obligate us to any of the debt repayment. That's all strictly on Prince of Peace and their revenue stream from, from the housing. It doesn't affect our bond rating, and it doesn't count towards our statutory limits on, on borrowing. And then as such, with this conduit financing, the city must approve the changes to the debt if there's refinancing or such, and then any changes to loan agreements. And that's what we're here tonight, Prince of Peace and Citizens Bank. I, I believe are looking to modify that loan agreement, and that's what the representatives will speak to here shortly. Any questions from council? I think some of you were here when we issued the conduit debt. It's pretty straightforward. If no questions, I'll turn it over to Ben Beckman. He's with Citizens Bank, and he'll give you a little more information on what's actually occurring.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So basically, what's happening here is the original loan agreement. Every five years, we have a rate reset. And the rate reset is indexed off of in this agreement, the seven-year treasury rate. Originally, we were going to do seven-year treasury plus a two percenting, or plus two percent to set the new rate. At that time, the treasury rate and two percent was very comparable to the existing rate of three and a half percent. We didn't anticipate the Fed to raise rates as fast as they did over the last couple of years. And when it, now this November first, when we're set to reset rates, the rates would be quite a bit higher than we originally anticipated. So what we are proposing, rather than having a two percent over the index rate, is we would like to do one percent over the index rate. We feel that this is an appropriate rate. We want to make sure we are being good corporate citizens of the community, supporting the need for Caesar, senior housing in our community. And yeah, like I said, we just think this is the right way to do it.
Any other team of motion?
Make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve resolution number one-five-seven-seven-four. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Development agreement with Kenneth Holdings LLC.
Um, Mayor, I'm going to handle that. I know Miles is gone at a, at a conference tonight, so. Want to say it was maybe a year ago, a year and a half ago, the EDA went out on proposals for the vacant Franklin site house, I think they called it. It was the old group home site that the city got. And they did receive one proposal on it. They've been working with, with a developer on that proposal and came forward with this development agreement. As with, as what's within the packet, the developer is looking at putting up Sears Row Homes. I think there's four houses there. And I think their plan is to do this project next year. So staff's recommendation is to approve the development agreement.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve the development agreement. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. First addendum to letter of intent for the Hutchinson Event Center.
One's going to take this one.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Included in your packet this evening is a first addendum to the letter of intent to purchase between City of Hutchinson and Hutchinson Health Partners for the purchase, potential purchase of the Hutchinson Event Center. All of the guidelines and regulation from the agreement would stay intact. The only change to the agreement would be the date. The original date was the end of this year, December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, and the addendum would be extending it to December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five. Myself and Matt met with leadership from Hutchinson Health and both feel confident in this extension to the letter of intent to purchase, and so our recommendation would be to sign that addendum.
Mayor and council, just a quick update. You may recall, this past year, we spent some time working with, I can't remember who the law firm was or whatever, trying to, if you may recall, we've got that obligation at the state. And basically, that didn't go in our favor. So I know the mayor was at our meeting yesterday with Representative Gilman and Senator Grunhagen. And we brought this up to see if there's a possibility for some legislative opportunities to potentially do away with that obligation. And so that was probably the biggest reason behind this extension. Gives us a little bit more time to see if we can, it's kind of going to our very last step to see if there's an opportunity to get out of that, that obligation that we have to, to pay back the state on that. So that's, I guess, probably the biggest reason behind it. And I know the hospital had some other capital projects that came up as a priority too, so.
Correct.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. And Lynn. We have resolution number one-five-seven-six-six approving the two thousand twenty-five HRA preliminary tax levy.
Good evening again. So we're going to have a series of preliminary tax levies for you to consider tonight. And just a reminder, the levies you set tonight are used by the county that go under their preliminary tax statement sent out to the property owners. Our final levy in December can't be higher than what you sent, set today, but it can always be lower. So I just wanted to state that. So I'm going to start with the HRA, which is a special taxing district, and by such, its tax levy is, is regulated by state statute. And kind of in the middle of this resolution here, you can see the calculation. It's a, a small percentage of our estimated market value of the city. And that market value is about one-point-five-five billion dollars for twenty-twenty-five. So the calculation for their maximum levy allowed by state statute for the HRA is two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-one. The HRA board is requesting only a hundred-and-seventy thousand to fund their operations next year. And that hundred-and-seventy would represent about a three percent increase over this year's levy amount. So with that said, I ask that you approve or set the preliminary levy for the HRA at a hundred-and-seventy thousand for twenty-twenty-five.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve. Resolution number one-five-seven-six-six. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Resolution number one-five-seven-six-seven approving the two thousand twenty-five EDA preliminary tax levy.
Okay, the EDA is similar to the HRA. It's a special taxing district. So again, its levy is, is regulated by state statute. The maximum levy amount for the EDA is two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-one. And that's the amount that the EDA board is requesting for its twenty-twenty-five levy to fund its operations. And that amount would be about a three-point-three percent increase over the twenty-twenty-four levy amount. So with that said, I ask that you set the preliminary levy for the EDA at two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars.
I'd make a motion to set that levy. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve resolution number one-five-seven-six-seven. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Resolution. You're going to be up there all night here.
This one might be a longer one.
All right. Resolution number one-five-seven-six-eight approving the two thousand twenty-five general fund and debt service preliminary tax levy.
Okay, we have two scenarios in front of you tonight. Obviously, you can consider other scenarios as well. Scenario one is essentially what we reviewed at the budget workshop a month ago, with a total levy of nine million four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-one. And then knowing that this is a preliminary levy and that we can't go higher in December, and we know we have some needs such as a future ladder truck purchase, which could be a combination of debt and, and city reserves, we thought it was prudent that we took a look at this other scenario to add a debt component in case we do need to issue debt for the fire truck. So that's the only difference with scenario one, two versus one, is we're adding roughly seventy thousand, just a little under seventy thousand, of debt related to the ladder truck. So that would bring the preliminary tax levy up to nine million five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand and ten dollars. The other thing we're doing with scenario two, although it doesn't impact our twenty-twenty-five levy, it would impact twenty-twenty-six, is that we're proposing an increase to our, our target cost target for when we do our roadway projects. I know we've talked about the one-point-nine-million-dollar target of costs that we bond for. And knowing that inflation has been eroding our purchasing power there with roadway projects, we're proposing increasing that target level from one-point-nine million to two-point-three million. And I'll go through a little more information here. But to show you the impact of both scenarios on our levies, that top half, scenario one is what Matt Yonick showed at the last budget workshop. Our general fund levy going up eight-point-six percent, our debt levy going up three-point-one percent, total city tax levy going up seven-point-one percent. And then when we factor in the EDA and HRA levies, it would be a total tax impact of six-point-nine. At scenario two, again, just adding additional seventy thousand roughly of, of debt for a ladder truck, the general fund stays the same, but our debt levy would jump from the three-point-one percent up above to five-point-nine percent below. So that's about an eight-tenth percent increase to our total city tax levy, bringing it to seven-point-nine. And then with the EDA and HRA included, seven-point-six percent. And then our, our impact to the median home, home value, we, we look at this each year. Scenario one is the green column. That's stayed the same from our last budget workshop. Down at the bottom, you can see under this scenario the median home value, which we're estimating at two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, would see an increase in its city taxes. That's city taxes alone, not county school. But city taxes would increase one-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars from their twenty-twenty-four taxes. Scenario two is the blue column on the far right with that additional seventy thousand of fire truck debt. That would result in an increase in city taxes of a hundred-and-ninety-two dollars from twenty-twenty-four. So about an eleven-dollar increase to the median home value from scenario two versus scenario one.
Andy, do we have any idea ballpark what the county and school tax will be? Will it add to that?
The preliminary I've seen from the county was two and a half percent. I don't know. Lynn, have you heard anything from the school district at all? I haven't heard it seen anywhere.
Yeah, I have not either.
Andy, yeah.
Yes.
Going back to the fire truck.
Yep.
Being I've had that discussion and looked at the numbers and what we're doing here, and first of all, there's some issues that, what, by December first, I think we, we could get into the new fire truck, or at least get an agreement going for the new fire truck by the end of this year. The first payment would be about six-hundred thousand, if I'm correct, based on that. And I, going off just rough numbers, but we're talking six-hundred thousand in twenty-twenty-five. And then twenty-twenty-six, there would be a second payment to that truck. And then the third payment would come on delivery, which would be a little higher at eight-hundred thousand, I think.
Correct.
But we've got, there's two bids out, or two different numbers.
Yep.
I know we had talked earlier, there's some, if we don't do this by the end of the year, there's going to be increased costs. We know that because of, partially because everything's going to be priced, but there's also new modifications that are required by our federal government or our government. That is going to increase the price of that. So incrementally, we're looking at a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars more money by delaying this any further. We don't even know if that's going to be a low end or high end. And I've kind of talked to, and talked to the council members and getting an idea. I think we need to move on the fire truck. Because we're talking two years. Two years of delivery, four years if we did the first bid, but the second bid is lower. And it's the truck we'd actually want in the community. And I'm looking at, can we, instead of bonding this, can we use capital?
Sure.
To do that.
I actually have some information on the backend of this that we can discuss. I'll just go through the rest of this, and then when we get to that slide, we can have a, a larger discussion on reserves versus debt. Because I think you're absolutely. Cause I think you're absolutely right. I think there's some room to, to use cash reserves. I'm not sure to what extent. And I do agree that we should be acting sooner and, and taking advantage of the cost savings, uh, rather than delaying. But yeah, I've got a slide that we can look, uh, towards the end of this.
Perfect.
This was the projected debt levy, uh, under scenario one. If you recall that, uh, our debt levy was projected to increase moderately each year until it stabilizes in, I believe, twenty thirty-one. Roughly in that three million dollar range. If we look at scenario two, which again, this factors in not only the new ladder truck, but also a- additional debt for roadway improvements and additional four hundred thousand of costs bonded for roadways. Uh, this would bring our target debt levy up from that three million range to a little over three point five million in the out years. So about a five hundred thousand dollar increase. And this doesn't include any cash reserves for the ladder truck at this point. But, uh, it'd be increase our debt levy by about five hundred thousand in, in the out years. But I also wanted to show you some information. When we last increased our, our, our cost target, that was back in twenty fifteen, effective for twenty sixteen. Back then, our cost target was at one point five million, shown in the blue ra- or the blue columns at the bottom of this graph. We were essentially limiting our, our bonding to one point five million of city cost. And then we realized back then that we hadn't been adjusting that for inflation. Sure, Chad, you, you probably remember this and Gary. So what we did was we bumped that target, four hundred thousand, to a total of one point nine million that we were now bonding for. And that was able to get us to do more project work again, instead of scaling back on projects because of inflation to our costs. So what that did, you can see the solid red line in the early years, that was our, our debt levy target at two point two million. And then when, when we added that four hundred thousand of costs, that slowly brings our debt levy target up to the two point six million in twenty thirty-one. So I believe it was an average of two percent average annual levy increases to get us from the two point two million target to two point six million. So that happened back in twenty sixteen. Then we added debt for a police facility, and that's what this, this graph is showing you. The green bar is our roadway debt, the yellow bars are the, the debt related to the new police station. And essentially what the police station debt did was it took our debt levy target of two point six million, the red line, and, uh, increased it to, uh, a little over three million, which is that purple line on the top. And to achieve that target, we're seeing annual average levy increases of about three point three percent to get from the two point six up to the three million. So that's what we did back in twenty twenty-two with the new debt for the police facility. Now, if we look at just simply increasing our, our roadway costs that we're bonding for from that one point nine million target, shown in the blue bars. If we increase it again, like we did back in twenty sixteen, increase it by four hundred thousand, so we can continue to do, uh, uh, projects and not scale back on projects because of inflation and, and cost increases for roadways. It would essentially bring our debt levy target, which is the red line, from three million in the out years to about three point five million is the purple line. So again, we would, we would see that increase in our debt levy in the out years, but it wouldn't be all at one time. It would be a gradual increase of about three percent over the next seven, eight years to get us to that target levy. And then if we factor in the fire truck, this is factoring in everything now that we're discussing for scenario two. The blue lot, the blue bars represent our current roadway and police facility debt. The yellow bars represent that increase in our cost target of four hundred thousand that we just looked at on the last slide. And then the pink bars at the top would be the new debt related to the fire truck. And again, we can talk about that debt and, and firm that up over the next couple of months too, if we need. But, um, so that essentially would bring our total debt levy need out in twenty thirty-seven up to about three point six million. So that's what we would be looking at with scenario two, but we could help our cause if we use cash, uh, for a portion of the ladder truck. I believe that's my last slide for the levies. I do have the special projects fund balances that, uh, Matt wanted me to kind of brush off and show you. So we essentially have two funds that we can tap into for the ladder truck. The capital projects fund on the left, you can see we have all these earmarks for projects that we, we currently have monies devoted to. Uh, quite a few actually. So our unreserved fund balance at the end of twenty twenty-three in the capital projects fund was just a little under one point two million. And then similar in the community improvement fund, we have an unreserved fund balance of, uh, uh, over one point three million. So in total, in the green box here, you can see total unreserved funds of a little over two point five million dollars that, that can be utilized. And then down at the bottom, you can see capital projects fund, I got, I have some notes here. That's primarily funded by L G A. And out of all our L G A we receive, fifty percent goes to the general fund, fifty percent to the capital projects fund. Two hundred thousand of our L G A is undesignedated. So it's sitting there, uh, without a, without a designated purpose at this point. So it essentially helps us to pay for some items that may pop up, some of the items on our C I P. But if we're not spending it, it helps us build that capital projects fund. Community improvement fund, on the other hand, that's funded primarily by retired debt service funds. So when we pay off, uh, a debt entirely, one of our bond issuances, any cash left over in that debt fund comes over to the community improvement fund. So over years, we've been able to build up that community improvement fund by, by those retired debt funds. And then at one point, we actually had, uh, the hospital monies that came into here as well, which I believe that was six million initially. And then we used a good chunk of that for the police facility. So at this point, we're not anticipating a debt service fund to be retired until twenty thirty. And that's essentially because we use some of our community improvement funds to, to pay off existing debt when we built the police facility. We paid off existing debt, I think we used about one point five million to pay off existing debt and had higher interest rates to replace it with new police facility debt at lower rates. So that essentially took four or five years of debt service funds out of the equation for replenishing the community improvement fund. So this community improvement fund, if we use those monies, we're not gonna see it replenished anytime soon, I guess, is the point I'm trying to make. Capital projects fund does have a funding source, uh, albeit not too large, two hundred thousand a year. So this is what we're looking at for reserves. We definitely could, um, dip into general fund reserves too, if council desires. Um, but those reserves are heavily looked at by the bond rating agencies too. So that would be our last effort, I would say. I'd say we look at these two funds first, if you wanna fund the ladder truck with cash. I guess I would recommend a combination. I don't think we can afford to fund the whole ladder truck with cash, but we could fund a portion. I guess with that said, I'll, I'll open it up for discussion and questions.
Man, council, one of the reasons that, um, I had asked Andy to give us a second option with the increase in debt was, as we've talked about from time to time, once we set our preliminary levy, you can't go higher. And knowing that, um, we didn't have an, an in-depth discussion on, on future, um, capital needs. Um, you know, we had, we showed a couple of scenarios. In my mind, we didn't get a clear direction from the council on whether or not there was a desire to increase any of that. Um, and so I wanted at least bring that back to make sure we could have that conversation. And then secondly, as I've shared with you in, um, separate communications, we've got two potential housing projects that are sitting in front of us right now that could, um, require some public investment in terms of roadways. Um, one is a hundred and ninety-one unit housing development on the north side. The other one is a sixty to seventy unit housing development in the downtown, um, that we both know potentially are gonna need some investment in our utilities. We're in the middle, um, the one is, a sketch plan is going to planning commission in October. They have a desire to start work next year. Um, the E D A is looking at two proposals for that downtown site with a potential start of construction in twenty twenty-five. Now, we've all been here, or at least I've been here, Andy had been here long enough to where these projects could completely fall apart, and we have nothing next year. Um, I'm trying to be mindful of the conversations that we've had throughout this year with our strategic planning. Where two things have been shared with staff. One, we need to see more housing growth in the community. And two, we don't want to, um, go back on our maintenance. Um, and so those potential two housing projects bring a dilemma to the council. One is, um, if we're not gonna increase revenue sources to pay for those housing improvements, we're gonna have to take it away from maintenance dollars or tap into some of these funds to help pay for those improvements. Or you're potentially gonna lose those housing developments. But we're sitting here in, end of September, and there's a lot of things that could happen over the next two or three months. So I just wanted to give the council the flexibility, um, to go a little bit higher with your debt levy if you want to. Um, but it's completely up to you, and I guess that's part of the reason why we have it on the agenda night is to, to open it back up to the council for discussion. And once again, realizing you can always lower that by the end of the year.
Well, I, I don't wanna, you know, do s- do something that, you know, uh, potentially hurts our bond- bond rating, you know? I, I still think that we need to keep that up. But, um, yeah, I, I think I go along with Tim that, uh, I think we should, uh, probably figure on maybe trying to purchase the ladder, you know, ladder truck.
What I was gonna ask Andy, do we have options in the future then, you know, payment ones due, what was it, twenty twenty-five?
I think when the chassis is delivered, the first payment is triggered, is that right?
The, the one that we are looking at here is the, would be zero due on contract side. The earlier we could do that would guarantee some, some benefit to, to us. Uh, first payment would be due end of twenty-five or early twenty-six, which would be around that six hundred thousand dollar mark. That would be the chassis payment is what that is considered. And then the next payment would be late twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven.
What factor is that?
Um, that one is the Rosenbauer, uh, Minnesota.
So the question is, being as broke up into that, could you bond for part of, I think you said that earlier? Bond for part of it and use cash for another project to get this rolling?
Yeah, the, the model I have in front of you tonight assumes bonding in two different years for the full amount. And yes, we could definitely use cash. I mean, if the first payment's not due till the end of twenty-five, you said?
Correct.
We can make that decision next year, the cash versus debt. The one thing we can't do is pay cash now, bond next year and reimburse ourselves. We can't, we can't do that.
Correct. And so you've got a window of opportunity there, the council would have a window of opportunity to say, okay, we had this pop up. Whether it's the, the buildings, or we have to do that, we go, okay, now we have to move to bonding.
Right.
And that's fine, but we push that out a year, but we get the truck in route. Cause we're gonna get more than one vehicle stacked up, we're gonna get to a point where maintenance wise, we're gonna need three vehicles at the same time.
Right.
And, you know, plus we also go to the safety of the community, the safety of our firefighters. Plus, we're looking at, you know, a five-year to ten-year plan where smaller communities surrounding us are gonna need more services from, and we're losing volunteer fire department. Because of these smaller communities, you have sixty-year-old, seventy-year-old people trying to make a fire department. And, and we've talked about that, that eventually we're probably gonna see a full-time fire, some full-time firemen, just because of the response time and the increased calls we're getting. And, and looking at that, look at that as our number one responsibility to our community is our public safety. You know, the roads, the public safety, those kind of things. And, you know, I love all kinds of different new, you know, it, the baseball diamond, it's great. It, that's, it would have never gotten done if they wouldn't have brought money into it.
You know, and we do have some options to get creative here too. You know, as I'm showing here in the capital projects fund, we have two hundred thousand of undesignedated L G A. We could essentially, if we needed to, we could use that to help repay debt on the fire truck. If we take out debt, we don't necessarily have to up our debt levy, we could pay some of it on that.
Well, and it's interesting because I was talking to a, a councilman down in Colorado, back when they did the cannabis. And they actually set the cannabis tax money that's coming back because they assumed there was gonna be more public safety needs. Because cannabis is legal, that's fine, and people can use cannabis and be responsible with it, but it's also a gateway problem. And, and people who have a mental health issue, and I know this because I work in it, will move on once that cannabis becomes less effective, they'll move on to heavier drugs. Or different ways of mitigating that problem. So what they did is set that cannabis tax money that was coming in to go to the public safety, police and fire for those first three years, I think is what they said they did it. And so they had a guarantee that the training programs and different things like that would be done. And we don't even know.
We have no clue.
What that might be. But it's still some door openings where we can use other funds coming in, if that fund's gonna come in to cover some of that cost. But it goes back to, we're looking at, if we hold off on this decision on the fire truck, we're just gonna get backed up further. And we've got maintenance, you're right, maintenance is important, the library's got a wall that's leaking. We need to start taking care, you know, the, the impetus right now is we don't want, they wanna put a new floor in. You're not gonna put a floor in when you get water into the basement, you know, into that area. Because now you're gonna put a laminate floor in, and a week from now, water goes into it, we're gonna have to replace laminate. So that's kind of how I'm leaning right now, and I, I feel strongly about that truck being, at least getting that started, the wheels moving on that. Cause we're not gonna see any decreases in prices, that's for darn sure.
But the scenario two, as Matt said, it gives us flexibility. We don't have to bond entirely for it, but at least this gives us time. We've got the levy, if, if you go with scenario two, we've got that levy flexibility in case we do bond. And if we don't, then we come back in December and say, we'll get rid of that seventy thousand, and it's, it's back to what we saw last budget workshop.
Yeah, I think it's a smart move to go with scenario two, just to give it a flexibility.
I don't like to see higher, but we're in a position right now where you're gonna see higher for a little bit because you're in a, you know, a, a, a inflationary problem. Now hopefully that all comes down, let me just saw it come down with bonding rates, you know, dropped a couple of percent, which saved two hundred thousand dollars. You know, and just think about whatever a couple of million dollars, two percent, three percent makes a huge difference.
Well, I think the other thing too is that, you know, and we all know socials and kind of work with developers. It, it gives us really three months to find out, okay, how serious are some of these other housing projects too? Because that might put a, a pressure on us that, you know, we have to deal with one way or the other.
And we could talk to the city attorney about that because you can always put, what do you wanna, uh, in a contract with those developers of, you know, there's a responsibility level here, what you've committed to it. If there's funds allocated for it and you back out of that commitment, what, what legal recourse if you had a contract saying, you know, that has to be paid back or at least a portion of that.
Yeah, and we currently have that in several of our, our development contracts the way it is, so yeah, all those things can be accounted for.
Thank you for that answer, because I was hoping that was the correct answer. Because there's some accountability, and we've talked about it, and Matt said, you know, over ten years, you've seen this, and they come and go and come and go. Well, we're right now in a position where if they come, uh, they gotta be prepared to pull me up.
And, and just to clarify both for the council and the public, we don't have any development agreements on these two housing projects. But when, I don't damn know, but when you've got one that's already starting to bring a sketch plan to the planning commission, that tells me they're pretty serious. And I know they'll likely be looking at T I F. And some, and this is I think part of what we just don't know yet. Can some of that T I F cover some of our costs for that infrastructure? It very well could.
You just asked me that question.
Yeah, and that's part of the process that you, you play out. And we may get to December and go, you know, we don't know. Um, but we also don't need to worry about setting a levy higher at this point either, because we, we know these things, and that, that's not gonna have an impact on it. But like I said, I think the reason we brought option two tonight was not that we're, at least from a staff's perspective, trying to champ, or trying to campaign for higher taxes, we're just here to tell the council, we think this gives you more flexibility. And at the end of the year, if you, you decide to be higher, I think that And at the end of the year, if you decide to be higher, I think that's going to be a decision you're going to make based off of what transpires over the next three months.
Well, development, development increases your tax rolls, it cut, you know, it spreads it out over more. And, you know, I'm, like I said, I'm not a favorer, but I think setting it higher right now to give us some room to move on these projects to make the council make the best decision we can for the community. So we're not getting stacked up because I hate to see, I mean, we, yes, we're going to have a jump, but two years from now, you know, you go from an 8% to all of a sudden you're coming back to a community of 14 or 15%. That's a, that's a big jump.
The EDA has talked about a $50,000 fee for the project down by the river of the medical site, and that would be returned to the developer upon delivery of a project. So we've talked about that a lot. We've had a lot of people on One Yard Land for a while down there.
And retain a motion to take the scenario two?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Motion by Tim, second by Dave to go with scenario two. Any other discussion?
I hope that the Fed, the people can try to make this economy look good and learn the rates down again.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've saw, you know, and the nice thing about the mortgage rates today, we saw that in the way 2000s, 2010s, we were doing more projects because interest rates were, were low too. And so that, some of that all plays in this too is that.
Because this doesn't, this doesn't take us off our road maintenance.
No, it does not. And that 400,000 I mentioned increasing our costs, you know, that, that was just an assumption. We, that's something we need to talk about today.
Could be 200.
Could be 200.
Could be 100, you know?
Well, thank you for the, thanks for answering that. And like I said, I think, I just got to reiterate that, that the fire truck needs to be moved because we're going to end up with a lot more, a lot more future debt than we have now.
I think that's a conversation the chief and I are going to have about bringing some sort of action item to the council here in the next month.
Any other discussion? A motion, on the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, name, motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Andy. Setting strategic planning session for October 22nd, 2024 at 3:45 PM.
Mayor Council, good government, yeah, that's the, the last topic that we have discussion, I'll do more on policy and programs at the city. And so that's kind of our last strategic plan session before we start getting to actually put in a document and a plan together. And so I would ask that you consider putting, or putting that, or setting that session before second meeting in October.
Motion approved.
Sorry, I have to sit here. Motion by Tim, second by Chad to set that meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, name, motion carries. Setting truth in taxation hearing for December 3rd, 2024 at 6:00 PM.
Mayor Council, this is our annual public hearing on the proposed budget and tax levy for 2025. Obviously, we had a brief discussion on that tonight. We'll go into more of those details at, at that point. It's the first Tuesday in December, which is historically when we've, when we've held it. The county, I believe, has their schedule for the 5th. And the school district, we usually do theirs at our board meetings, so there shouldn't conflict with any other hearings. I'll make a motion to set that meeting.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to set that meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, name, motion carries. Minutes, reports from committees, boards or commissions. We have the library board minutes of July 22nd, 2024. Parks and Rec Community Education Board minutes from August 5th, 2024. Planning Commission minutes from August 20th of 2024. City of Hutchinson financial report and investment report for August of 2024. Chief Gipperson, you got anything?
Not today.
Chief, you know, I've been hearing that some of our elderly have been getting scammed again, just a couple reports. Chief, can you just kind of tell them that they can call the police department and, if it's too good to be true, it's too good? Is that how they say that?
Don't ask me to come up here if you're going to steal my thunder.
Okay, I take it back.
Yeah, unfortunately, these scumbags are, continue to be out there preying on the elderly, not just the elderly, but also other individuals as well. But as you said, if it's too good to be true, it is. If they're asking you to pay for, pay for something with gift cards, if you've never met this person and they're, and they're asking you for money, probably a scam. So just ask questions. That's probably my, my best advice, just ask questions. Make sure you're getting advice from somebody other than your own, or other than yourself. So call a family member at, run it by them, call the police department, run it by us. And 99.9% of the time, we're going to tell you it's a scam.
Yeah, well, I, I kudos to you guys. I know you stopped the few already, you know, just keep up the good work because I, this sickens me to know that there's people out there that prey on the elderly and, you know, so.
Well, again, it's not just the elderly. I mean, there's corporations that get scammed just as easily as grandma, so just need to be vigilant.
Thanks, chief. Chief Schuman, you have anything for us tonight?
Just wanted to recap on the open house on the 14th. We had a good, great showing, we had well over 500 people there, good weather, good event. So thank you to those in the community that came and attended.
All right, thank you. Lynn, you have anything for us?
Nothing tonight.
All righty. Mike, you have anything for us?
Nothing this evening.
Roundabouts are open and people are going around them.
We're the most around.
Andy, you have anything left?
Nope, nothing for you.
Nothing?
I think I had it off.
Beat you up enough? Mark, do you have anything for us tonight?
Hey, let's start with you. Well, we have the MMDC meeting today with the RTC and I guess basically transportation is still a huge issue in the state, probably all over the country as far as that part was concerned, but doing a lot of work on that. The biggest thing I wanted to bring up this evening is that on October 9th, Meeker and McLeod County, or I'm sorry, Meeker and McLeod Senior Expo is the update is going to be at the Fairgrounds. Fairgrounds opens up at 8:30 and I think it runs till 2 o'clock in the afternoon. So first cup, first serve, whatever it might be, there's going to be some food there and really has to do with all the senior issues that they could probably handle. So you're more than welcome to come. And the other thing that would be, sure it is, absolutely. That went completely over the top of my head. Had some, and probably this wasn't as bad important, but yeah, so I'm just reiterating to the seniors that the expo will be on October 9th at the Fairgrounds. Oh, I know what the other thing was. If you have questions about the MMDC, they have a website, so go to that and that will answer all my questions for you. I don't know if I can, you know, go through the whole thing, but, but there are people that can, so. That's it.
All right, thanks, Dave. Hey.
I had a meeting with the public dirt and just retiring a lot. Pretty quick, it'll be time for submissions for the new statues around town, the sculptures and just moving forward with that.
That's it. Chad?
We had an EDA meeting this morning. We might have a tenant at Enterprise Center, which is exciting. That's a fun business, so it'll be good. And then my house has a couple of interested people on the medical center site, so that'd be great to land a project down there. And the Hutchinson Station newspaper will have a candidate forum printed next week for those of us that are candidates, so check that out because it'll be a great read. That's all I got.
All right, thanks. Kevin?
Well, just the, and people from the City Vehicle Preservation Association will be in town on October 5th at Masonic West Park. There'll also be a parade through town. They're bringing about 40, 50 restored military vehicles also that, from the United States from World War II and back Korea, all those time periods.
They want to keep you away from the tank?
Yeah, well, I asked chief and he said, I don't have no power supply, and I said to get one, but said it probably wasn't a great idea. But yeah, chief has helped out with their route through Honey River and through kind of that area. And they have a 1537 Packard that's joining up, which was a general staff car from the Navy back then. So a lot of interest in those old vehicles. They'll be out. There's a tracker on their site, so you can tell exactly where they are on their trip. They're actually going to, from, they start and go through the United States, either east and west or north and south every year. This year they're going north and south and they'll end up in New Orleans, so. And they travel in their convoy about 30 miles per hour, so it takes some while. But come out, it's that, probably right around 5:00, 5:30 that evening, they'll be in the park and it's free, you can walk through and take a look at some great old vehicles. October 5th is a Saturday. Met with some residents here who were concerned about feral cat issues, especially in some of our trailer park at that area, mobile home parks, because they're transferring fleas and other issues like that. Biggest thing that came out of it is if you want to help with that, the Himalayan Society would, you know, is kind of responsible for that. The big thing is they put some coolers together that they're making cat houses for the feral cats, because of course, those cats also keep the mouse population down. But they also have some funding for spaying and neutering, so they're trying to get that done. But the biggest thing they wanted is if you have cats and they're roaming the community, actually just pay and neuter because we're getting in over abundance. They had trail cam photos that they had put out and, yeah, there's cats all over the place. So make sure your cats are clean because they can spread disease and fleas and those kind of things. But they wanted some awareness in the community. And the last thing was, we have the library board meeting and there's a whole lot of stuff going on this fall at the library, so check it out. Not only just going there to read, but children's programs, Legos, coding, all kinds of different things, so, and they're well participated. And so, and they kind of changed the whole face of what the library looked like to getting people excited to go there again. Thank you.
That's it, thank you. Matt?
Couple things first, I know the mayor was there yesterday along with some of our staff, but I did want to just do a thank you to Representative Gilman and Senator Newman for coming and listening to staffs. We've got three bonding requests that are out there and so we shared.
Senator Greenhagen?
Senator Greenhagen, I'm sorry, I said Newman.
Boy, oh boy, I got to write this one down, I get, I got the correct man.
Well, you know what, I screw up every great now and then, so. But they did come out and talk about, we were able to share with them obviously our, our capital needs and so I appreciate them meeting with us on that. This Saturday is fall cleanup, so the hard good, if you've got up to two items, you can store that out. They'll start collecting at 6:00 in the morning, so. And a lot of times people will call us and, well, we didn't, they didn't pick it up, but we needed to set it out. I set it out Saturday afternoon, it's too late, so get it out. Here's a little hint, if you get it out now, other people may come and take it and you can pull more stuff out after that, so. And then just a reminder, early voting, voting has started and you can do that here at city center during normal business hours. That's it for me.
All righty, well, we had HRA meeting, plenty of programs out there for, to help fix up your house, so always check with the HRA to see if you qualify for it. Chad, this is for August now, this is a realtor from Minneapolis area, but for Hutchinson, we had 34 new listings. And we had 26 closed sales in August. So oddly market is still, still kind of moving around. Airport commission, we did, had a visit from the FAA. We passed with flying colors, had a few things that they wanted us to take care of, so. But one of the other things when Greenhagen and Gilman was here, we kind of, the Civil Air Patrol was in and for people that see the big blue building out there, that's actually just their hangar. And they're looking to put up a barracks in a, in educational site out there. So we kind of pushed, kind of asked, ask them to sponsor that for us, so hopefully we'll get some bonding dollars for that, so they can go ahead with that. Kind of piggybacking with Tim, dogs and cats, you know, if you have them spayed it and neutered, you can go down to the police department, get a license for them, it's cheap insurance because if your dog or cat does get out, if it has a license on it, they get it returned to you, you know, they'll, they'll call us and so. Otherwise, that's it, beautiful night, let's go home and enjoy it.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, name, motion carries. Thanks, everyone.